Good evening, everybody. I'm here for a regular agenda tonight. This is June 19th, 6 o'clock PM. And we're going to stand for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mrs. Thor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Councilor, the roll call, please.
Mayor Jerome?
Here.
Ms. Hope?
Here.
Ms. Tillot?
Here.
Mr. Ralston?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Crayle?
Here.
Mr. Massey?
Here.
Thank you. It's time for the public comments. And we only have two bars tonight, and it's an opportunity for the public to come up and speak. Three minutes, and state your name and address, and when you come on up. And have Mary Miller.
Mary Miller, I'm the Serenity Park Coordinator, 200 East 10th Avenue, Mount Dora, Florida. Good evening, Mayor Jerome, City Manager Hayes, and the City Council. You will all be happy to know, we are here this evening not to request funding. Through previous city funding, Mount Dora Community Trust grants, generous private donations, and our engraved brick fundraiser, Serenity Park is financially stable. After some small planned additions, we will still have funds for future needs. City Road Services Director and the Parks Department both deserve special recognition for continuing to help us through our Stage Two. Reggie Thomas, Parks Operations Supervisor, and his staff have found sources, placed new orders, received, assembled, and set up equipment. Ross Bushman, in addition to being Parks Foreman- ...he is. Although the entire staff is not listed here, they have all been courteous and professional. In part, it read, "The goal of-" "-to pause and refresh, and for neighbors to meet in an unhurried environment." Projects like this cannot be done alone. In saying thank you- ...to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Miller. On that park, this is beautiful. It's a beautiful addition to our city.
TK Lewis, 2103 Dogwood Circle, Mount Dora. I have a retention pond behind my house on Dogwood Mountain. And I love it, but I'd like to populate- -put my time and effort or money towards it, but I just don't know the rules- -that I needed to jump through. So I was wondering if I could ask this one quick question, and then volunteer my services after that.
And choose a woman with the hopes.
Oh, great.
...um-
I think we've met.
Yes. So he can guide you and direct you and give you some assistance.
Anybody else wish to address the council any item not on the agenda? Name and address.
President Abada, 541 East First Avenue. I had not planned to address anything but- So she wanted me to let you all know, and this is really important, and you should come. June 26th at 7 o'clock in the Community Building, yes, it's the thing the mayor's holding up, the Air National Guard Band of the South Concert. And this band is a big band, concert band, jazz band. Please come. It's to get us in the spirit of the Fourth of July, and how great this country is. And what better than to have a-
Anybody else wish to address the council? Seeing none, we have a nice presentation coming up. Ms. Hayes, would you like to start?
Looking for Chief and Chief, yes. Public Safety Director John O'Grady and Chief Reiner, please.
Mayor, Council, and the Stays. Thank you very much for the chance to do this. We'd like to put new badges on two new firefighters and one promotion to Lieutenant. So it's a few moments out of your time, but it's a big deal in the career of firefighters. It's a big career. So you guys can come on in. So we have kind of a crowd here to witness.
Come on in.
Steve, bring them in. Come in, come on around.
So the first firefighter we'd like to pin a new badge on is Dara- Bachelor's Degree in Emergency Management. And the person who's going to pin her badge on is Joe Silvestris. Joe is the Fire Chief in St. Cloud.
Seven oh one.
And as you've heard me say before, being a firefighter is a big family commitment. So it's really nice when firefighters have their family with them. And Mark Holzbeck is our next firefighter that we're going to pin a badge on. And his wife Ainsley is going to pin his badge on. This is Skylar and Owen. Tim Carpenter has been a fireman with Mount Dora for 19 years. And tonight, we get a pin of Lieutenant's badge on.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
So we have a reception next door with their families. So thank you for the time.
Next time, the approval of the agenda is up for now. I'd like to just request that we move number- Anything else now?
I so move the name.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move the City Hall Annex Building Improvement. I have two of the extended agenda for the regular hearing agenda. I may, I think it deserves some comment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor of the agenda as presented just now? I'll just tell me to get through it. Okay, we only have one consent agenda item, and that's the approval of City Council, may you minutes? And do we have a date on that, on them, or not?
Yes, sir. May 15th, City Council Work Session, CRA Governing Board in Regular Session, and June 5th, Regular Session.
We've got a motion for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I'll pass that one. And the public hearings, and we want, we're going to do the City Hall Annex Building Improvement. And at this point, so Ms. Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. What we've presented to you tonight is a realignment of a capital account that was budgeted during the budget process last year of about $66,000, scheduled to be spent in this room, actually on our BSI audio. That accounting really, although it could be tagged to the discretionary sales tax, which is what it was tagged to, 111 account, I think it's more appropriate to be a general fund account, because I don't really believe it's an asset, a fixed asset. I do believe it is a mobile unit, which we could move. So, and looking at the realignment of some of those dollars, it actually just became pretty easy to take those funds and say, okay, what else are we going to do? We were going to present those as to mid-year to you, as a back-to-the-fund balance. And then, as we went through some of the buildings we've been looking at this year, or some of our current facilities, and we looked at the fact that we moved IT over here. We had availability of space in our annex building. We are currently renting space out in the, I guess it's 3787 Lake Center Drive. The cost to rent that space annually is about 24,000, excuse me, and some change. It's worked for us. It is not adequate space for staff. They're pretty much packed in there. So I had staff look at how we could modify the annex building in order to move that crew from the Lake Center Drive over to this building using those funds, and no more than those funds. We, in the meantime, found that we had some air conditioning leaks during Irma. We knew we had a little bit of a roof leak during that time, but we didn't realize we had air conditioning leaks. So we have some cleanup of the second floor wall space that needs to be remediated. So there's some maintenance in here also. But just really simply putting some paint on the walls, moving a couple doors, and making this a respectable place for our Public Works Department, Utilize Department. And there are offices to move until we build the Public Works Facility. So at that point in time, then, it will be up to council again to look at that facility, the Annex Building, which was part of a donation to the city, and it has stipulations on how we can use it. But at that point in time, you can decide how to use that facility. But in the meantime, we saved the $24,000, beginning with the October budget, really applying that to the fixing, the repair work at the building, and then a little bit of approximately $30,000 attachment. One, I believe, had some details on there for you to look at, and just again, prepare this for staff, so that we can move them to an area that's more appropriate for their needs. And I would be glad to answer any of your questions.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the City Hall Annex Improvement, along with the proposed change of capital projects with the same funding source?
I'll move. I'll submit.
Second. Any comments, questions from council?
I'd like to make a comment, if I may. Thank you all for moving that, so we can allow the discussion. And I think this is a logical step in the sequence of things, as our City Manager said, that this is facilitated by the fact that IT was moved from that building to the basement here in a renovation process, which frees excess space in the annex, and we pay office based rental for three divisions that are off station. And I think this is a smart move, very timely, fits into the sequence of things. I simply wanted to move in support of it, but I wanted there to be a chance to comment, because we're about to spend $66,000. We'll recover that in three years, in the cost of rent. So I do support. Thank you.
How many people are we talking about relocating up to them?
How many people? Eleven?
Just eleven.
Eleven people.
Eleven. And so when do we anticipate, I mean, how long do we anticipate, how many years do we anticipate them being in that building before the-
I would like to think the two years. I'm not sure that it'll be much more than that. We'll bring to you a plan for the financing, the Public Works Building here in the next few weeks, and get underway with the October 1 budget on the engineering side of that. And then, the build, I believe, was about 18 months to 24 months. So I think two years plus, but not much more than two years. So this puts them in, again, a respectable place to await their move to that facility at some point in the future.
And how soon can we terminate the lease? Are we going to incur any early termination charges on the lease?
No, as-
Building now, or can that be done within 30 days?
It can be done very quickly. As a matter of fact, the owner actually has recently, or is attempting to sell it, and the buyer actually had reached out to us and asked if we needed to rent it in the future. They were not trying to push us out, but they just needed to know. So it's actually worked out well for everyone. Our goal, my goal, and staff is probably looking at me going, okay, is August 1st, only because there is a backup generator in that facility, and it works for Charles and the electric crew. If we encounter a storm of any type, he is set up in the facility where he needs to operate from. So our goal is August 1st, but at least by October 1st. So in the new budget year, we will not budget those funds.
Okay. So basically, you mean the generator in the $90,000?
Annex Building. Yes.
Ms. Ralston? I support it as well. It's a good corporate business decision to do this, to centralize the staff. Having them having to drive all over the place makes a little economic and wise use of time sense to me. So it's certainly, and the payback, as Mr. Massey has said, or you've said as well, in two or three years, makes just good business sense.
Any comments from council? Seeing none. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Councilor, roll call, go, please.
Mr. Ralston?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Resolution number 2018-74, the Gilbert Park Playground renovation project. Ms. Koff, if we have the title read, please. 2018-74.
Page 2,042.
For me, by the way, man, as a manager.
So yes, I sit out lengthy packages.
Just hope we have enough out storage for this stuff.
Resolution number 2018-74, a resolution of City of Mount Dora authorizing a cooperative purchasing agreement with Compan Inc. for the purchase and installation of park and playground equipment at Gilbert Park, providing for legislative guidance and impact, providing for authority to the City Manager for implementing administrative actions, authorizing the mayor to execute said work order, providing for savings provision, and providing for sure the mayor's conflict severability and effectiveness.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. I would like Ms. Jewel to come up and just give a brief summary of our meeting earlier today, and reference to the workshop, the work session, and just some of the highlights that we would like to mention to the public, and so that they can have an idea of what we're asking the council to do. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Amy Jewel, Pleasure Services Director. Our current playground at Gilbert Park to Main Street was built in 1990, very innovative at its time. 28 years is a pretty great run for a playground equipment. It is inspected weekly, and there has been splintering wood, protruding nails, loose nuts and bolts, sheets of metal peeling up from the slide, and there are parts and pieces that are not replaceable. As we've stated earlier, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan is reviewing all of our parks, and as well as involves the online survey. 62% of the 1,300-plus respondents to the survey said that they have visited Gilbert Park in the last year. There were several concerns related to the safety of it being a wood product. GAI Consultants has deemed it as not meeting the current expectations due to the level of the rotting wood. And Compan Incorporated Playground Equipment has presented a concept that met the space, creative play, physical fitness requirements, and as well as the wow factor that we're looking for for our parks. The equipment would be purchased with the park's impact fees, that after seven years, if they go unused, will return to the community. So we would like to use those funds. And it will be purchased utilizing a master intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement, piggybacking from the City of Charlotte, North Carolina. Timing would begin, as soon as it was approved, equipment would be ordered. It would take eight to 10 weeks, I believe, to get here. Construction would, demolition would begin probably within 30 days, and then construction would begin at the end of August, hopefully having a ribbon cutting around October 1st.
The demolition would be out as general fund. So the dollars, we're still looking at quotes, and of course, have not finalized anything based on the decision tonight. But those would be general fund dollars, could be around $10,000. So it'll be funds that we'll use that are currently operating, will shift some funds around to take care of that.
We have a motion to approve Resolution number 2018-74. So move.
Second.
Thank you. Comments, questions from council? Seeing none. Anybody from the public wish to address this item? State your name and address, please.
Lynn Hatch, your Country Club of Mount Dora. And probably about 10 years ago, I came before City Council, and they were going to put in a tot lot right next to there. And I asked that since children with disabilities, children in wheelchairs in Dora had no place to play, their parents had to drive them into Orlando. At that time, Mickey Carroll did a benefit concert and helped raise money in order to build what you're calling a tot lot, which is really our for children with disabilities. And it was designed to be handicap accessible, with the Director of Parks and Recreation at the time working with us teachers and parents of kids with disabilities. And that's why there's ramps and everything. Over the years, I've used it all the time. We have little kids who cannot go to any other park in our city. This is the only one. We built one in the country club, but nobody in a wheelchair could use that one. And that happens all the time. I'd like to ask the council to, number one, we just did a park survey, which has not been finalized, and to wait. Number two, to consider, when I looked at the design from this, yes, my kid in a wheelchair could sit on the outside and maybe hold the steering wheel while the other kids are on the pirate ship. But there's no access to the pirate ship for that child in a wheelchair. There's also nothing overhead. If you've ever been on a place structure in Florida in the middle of summer, there's no covering. And on one that's metal like that, it's really hot. I can tell you, I sit there every day. There's some things I'd like to see tweaked, and I think, or to be considered. I'd love to see, and I've seen the plans, and they're less money, to do a handicap-accessible splash pad, where, very simple, concrete structure comes up. Several of them even have a lighthouse, which would be more typical to Mount Dora than a pirate ship. You could do, there are a bunch of things around. Every kid could use it in the summer, it's hot here. Put a kid in a wheelchair that can't use the Lincoln Pool, that can't use anything, could go through and use it. It would be something accessible for all children. The other thing is to consider more swings in that area. There just aren't enough swings when you're there, and that could be added. But I'd like to reconsider the structure, so that it's something that would have a ramp if you're going to use a pirate ship, a ramp so it could get up and be with the other children. I mean, we've all seen dramatic pictures lately of immigrants, you know, and the child standing crying. That's the kid in the wheelchair, whose friends are on the structure, and he can't be there. So I'd like to ask City Council to once again consider even doing a competitive bid to get Miracle Recreation or some other vendors in there, and see if we can get some accessible designs, or to have Compan come back and do an accessible design and submit it for competitive procurement.
Thank you.
Mike Masterson, 7887 Crosswinds Way. I guess I raised the concerns with respect. The last company I worked for sold the plastic that goes into the rotationally molded structures. And my experience with it is that I haven't been able to find a manufacturing site for Compan. There are companies that actually manufacture and sell and deliver and design these kinds of structures. There's one in Fort Payne, Indiana, or three, Fort Payne, Alabama, named Game Time, a division of Play Corps, that I used to interact with. Step Two, we've all seen Step Two equipment, Step Two makes equipment and participates in this market. There's a company called PlayCraft, Advanced Recreational Systems, and another one called Landscape Structures. And I believe all of these people have manufacturing capability in-house. And I speak of that and respect that. There are rotationally molded parts in these designs. And if a manufacturer is making the parts that he delivers, he has the ability, if there is a broken part, a replacement part needed, et cetera, he has the ability to go manufacture that part on his equipment and schedule, and give you quick service. If you deal with someone who does not manufacture but outsources that stuff, then they have to wait, they have to go try to find, get that part sourced and manufactured. And so I offer that as a suggestion that if, I don't know, I understand there's some urgency, but these people are leaders in this industry. And I'd like to say, I couldn't find Compan. They had a deal going with, they were moving their headquarters, I believe, to Flugerville, Texas. I could not find a manufacturing facility there. They had a deal with the State, City of Dallas, or Flugerville, to, if they hired so many people, they'd get a tax abatement, they did not fulfill that, which causes me to have some concern. They're also based in Tampa. They have lots of installations all over the country, and they're a worldwide company, but I just did not see a manufacturing facility, being from the manufacturing background. I raised that concern, or make that suggestion, as if you're trying to, you know, develop a plan. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That was less than three minutes.
It was.
Why say blah, blah, and blah, we'll do it? No, I've seen the 2,400-page agenda.
An editor to the next one.
Where was our mark before? We did, you helped yourself this time, 2,000 pages. Anybody else in the public wish to address this item? Okay, seeing none. Back to council. Any other comments from council? And Mr. Tucker and Mr. Ralston?
Thank you.
Again, I don't want to repeat what I stated during the workshop, but while, if there's a problem with any of the current equipment out there, it's a safety hazard, take it down starting tomorrow. But I see no reason to rush into this expenditure. And we just had two excellent speakers come up and pretty much show, bring up concerns that we had not addressed, especially the one about the handicap accessibility. I see no reason to rush into this. Again, if there's a problem with any of the current equipment out there, which was pointed out to us, you've got me Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I'll volunteer and start helping you tear down stuff. Because if there is a concern about the safety, let's take it down. But I just don't want to rush into this expenditure.
Mr. Ralston?
Thank you, Mayor. My assumption is that Compan, Pen, Compan, and Ms. Jewel and others have the ability to make sure they build, it's ADA, ADA-compatible anyway, and that would involve, I'm assuming, accessibility by the handicapped as well. Now, as long as that's kept in mind, and I'm assuming some of these designs can be tweaked enough to make sure there's additional handicap accessibility, I support this concept because I think it should be done now. But it's important to do the best that you can in the design, in the final design stage, to make sure that it is adequately handicap accessible. And I'm assuming that will be an ADA, as long as we're ADA compliant. And I'm assuming that will be an ADA, as long as we're ADA compliant. Thank you.
Yeah, my comment concerns the ADA as well, and it was my understanding during the workshop that the ADA compliance was referring to accessibility into the area, not necessar, so in other words, a grandparent or a parent would have accessibility, you know, sort of, into the area, not necessarily the equipment, the, the structure itself. I didn't really see any, on the picture, I, I don't recall seeing ramps where a child, that would be wide enough for even a child's wheelchair to, to go up a ramp onto one of the levels to access any of the play activities. So, I, as you know, I was initially skeptical of the, the speed with, with which we are pursuing this, although after hearing that our certified playground or play equipment inspector had recommended that this be handled at the earliest possible opportunity, I've, I've sort of, you know, mellowed a little bit on that, but I would like to make sure that, that handicapped kids can, can access and, and play on this as, as well.
Right.
So I'd like some assurance on that, as well as Mr. Masterson, I think, raised a valid point about the manufacturing of the equipment. If a part comes in that's, you know, broken or, or not to spec, you know, how soon that that kind of thing can, can be replaced. So I, I think before I voted, before I vote yes, I'd like just some assurances on that.
So Amy, can we talk a little bit about the two-to-five-year-old and the accessibility there, and the five-to-twelve-year area that we're considering? That's the area that's to be considered. And when I went out there today, we, at this point in time, you cannot actually put a wheelchair in that area because of some of the lips that are there, two to four inches.
The entrance is wide, but then it narrows, it narrows as you go into the castle-type structure.
The entrance to what?
To the five-to-twelve-year-old.
To the five-to-twelve.
So, we're talking, I think we're kind of talking two different things, because I'm trying to track accessibility, accessibility is, the playground currently is accessible to ADA. It will continue to be accessible to ADA. If the features that will be added in the new pro, in the new playground will, will be not just accessible, but will be geared toward a child that's ADA, as well as the basket swings, will be geared toward an integrated all-child approach. So whether it's a ADA needs, or any, any child will be able to access the basket swings as well as underneath the pirate ship. So currently, the, we've got two different entrances to the playground. There's one of them that enters to the two-to-five-year-old in between the two, and that is the ADA accessible entrance. The other entrance is not accessible. We will be removing the fence and re-outlining, redoing the fence, I guess, is the best way to say it, so that it is accessible, as, as well as dealing with a couple other issues, as Ralph had mentioned. If you have several different entrances to a playground, you also have several different exits to a playground, so if you think your child is contained within an area, they're not necessarily, because they're escaping out the other area, so.
But we're also not changing the two-to-five-year-old area at all, and that's the area that has the ramp.
For accessibility.
Accessibility. So we're actually not proposing to change the area that would be promoted in the sense of accessibility for the needs. The other areas would also be used for that, or could be used for that, but that particular two-to-five-year-old is not being presented as a change.
I, I guess I'm, maybe I'm, I'm probably, you know, speaking clear as mud here, but it's not so much, I'm not so much concerned about the area, the play area, as I am the play equipment.
And that's what we're referring to, is the play equipment.
The equipment itself, I'd see it was my, when, so, so Ms. Tatcher then, her concern was that children who are, who, who, you know, can't walk, or, or in a wheelchair, don't have access to, let's call it the pirate ship, or.
The second level of the pirate ship, I think is probably what you're referring to, and no, most likely they might have access.
There is, but there is access to the first level of the pirate ship.
Correct.
With activities to, okay.
And also full access to the two-to-five-year-olds, if they choose to go through that with a wheelchair, so that is fully accessible too.
Right. Well, I'm thinking about an eight-year-old or a nine-year-old who, you know, is not gonna want a wheelchair to the second. Okay.
If I remember, and obviously I've been around a while, the, the ADA component of equipment for the younger children was the additional component of the park. It wasn't done twenty-eight years ago. It was added to it, and it was one of the things that we were known for here in town, of having a playground that had ADA accessibility for the children in their wheelchairs to use the equipment. That was a unique thing to our park, right Lynn?
Yes.
So, and that part is still gonna stay. We may well, and that was the question asked earlier this afternoon, is to what year was that done, and when would we put that on the agenda, probably as the plan that we're working on progresses, is to have its refurbishing also, is the way I guess I look at it. I would, I am not comfortable thinking, with all due respect, Mr. Tucker, of tar, starting to take that part apart and do it. I would rather us decide we want to correct what's happened over time, because it's twenty-eight years old, the other piece younger, and that, Ms. Jewel, when she joined us, as she said earlier today, it's the thing she's heard the most about since she's been here, so her team has been working on this for a period of time, to put the plan together, to get it to us, knowing that, knowing that her team is also out there doing maintenance routinely, but because of the aging of the materials and the availability of materials at this point in time, we really are at a point where we can't fix some of the things. So I would rather see us move forward. It's the fine funds that we need to use anyway. I'm comfortable because I don't believe this park's gonna go away in the park plan, and, quite frankly, we're months away from the final, we may well have the data collected, but the data has to be reviewed, it has to be presented, it's gonna be mulled over, we're probably, I'll probably be sitting at audience next summer when you're dealing with what that plan comes out with, in all reality. And I'm not trying to be rude, but that's the reality of how things flow along. And yet we've got an issue that I think we need to deal with now. Why it took so long to get it to us, that's history, but I think we need to move forward and do what we need to do to have a safe place for parents and grandparents to bring their children to play, and have the balance of what we have there.
Mr. Crail? I, I certainly agree with all of that, and always, I think we have to keep the needs of our special needs kids and adults, parents and grandparents who are visiting, and I, I like the idea of the splash pad for all, and that certainly doesn't preclude any of that. This is just what is needed right away.
Any other questions from council?
I mean, I'm comfortable with it, I just wanted to make sure that the area and equipment that you're, that would be handicap accessible, ADA compliant, to the folks.
Ms. Johnson, roll call, though, please.
Yes. Mr. Crail?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Rolson?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Okay, we got, this is, the next four items is why, why we got a two-thousand-page agenda tonight, and because we love transparency, and so we can put all the information of each one on there. However, we're, we're gonna read, each one's gonna be, this is gonna have its own titles, and we did title for each one, but we're only gonna have one presentation and one's, probably just one set of questions from the city council, but we're, each one, as we go through each one, the public be invited to speak on each one individually, and the blood on each one individually at that point also. So, Ms. Kokroff, we have the title read for Resolution Number Twenty Eighteen dash sixty-one.
Resolution Number Twenty Eighteen dash sixty-one, a resolution of City of Mount Dora, Florida, relating to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, FDEP, state revolving fund, SRF adoption of the SRF planning document for the implementation of the reclaimed water interconnect with the City of Apaca improvements, authorizing the mayor to execute the SRF planning document in accordance with sound procurement practices and principles, providing for legislative binding sound tent, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for savings provision, and providing for governor's errors, complex severability, and effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Yes, Mayor, council members, thank you. So Joe Grisakis will come up and give you a, a summary idea, a summary of the state revolving fund facility plan. The first one is the Apaca reclaim. It's for about two-point-seven million. SRF loan is for about two-point-one-five, with the state, St. John's, that committed the five-hundred-and-fifty thousand earlier in the year, if you recall. We will be reaching back out to them also for additional funding, but at this point in time, Joe, would you like to come up? And then, as he goes through the process, we have some experts here that will reach out to him, and then come up and give you some information also. And, yes.
Thank you, council. This is, I only brought one of them, this is, they're all about the same, the financial is most of it in the background. Again, you're gonna have four items, I'm gonna ask Besch and PRMG, our consultants who worked on putting this package together for us, to come up and give a presentation of all the packages at one time. What we're doing right now is we're asking for inclusion into the state funding system. We are not asking for the loan, we're asking to be part of the state appropriation. The loan itself will come back to you after it gets inclusion. We have a deadline of August, the meet, the meeting is, is in August. We will find out if they're funding all of these projects at that time, and we'll come back to council. Okay? With that, I'm gonna introduce, I have members from Besch here and PRMG, and they'll give a presentation on the SRF programs and each project.
Mayor, would you like to read all the titles first, before you do that?
Well, I wanna say, we, that's, the state requested that, as part of the procedures, is that we read each one individually, and then they get the public input process, public input on each one of us.
So, here from the consultant would be the procedure, take a vote, then have me read the next one, take public comment, get a vote, read the next one.
We'll do the public comment, so we'll do the presentation, their presentation, all four of them at that point.
And then I'll read them, step, like after, and all those, then I'll read them. You'll close that item, open one, and I'll read it.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Mike Scollion from Besch. Talked to you a little bit this evening about the state revolving loan fund program for funding some of your utility projects. This is a, through the state of Florida, Department of Environmental Protection runs up through the United States EPA, been around since nineteen-eighty-nine. There are two different loan programs, the clean water, SRF, which covers wastewater and reclaimed water utilities, as well as the drinking water, SRF, which just covers drinking water facilities. We used these last year to fund the utility improvements on State Route Forty-Six and the ancillary Lakewood Parkway project that's currently ongoing. The big advantage here, you see on the right side of this slide, the red line is the traditional municipal bond market. The blue and green lines represent the rates under the SRF loan program. The drinking water rates are typically about sixty percent of the municipal bond funds, while the wastewater, anything under the clean water side is based on median household income and population, or significantly lower, generally one percent or less of an interest rate. These programs do require Davis Bacon Wages and compliance with the American Iron and Steel Act, which tends to increase the construction costs a bit, but there's additional relief and reduction in the interest rate for meeting those two requirements. This is a brief outline, or kind of a flow chart, from the Department of Environmental Protection on the process. We submit a request for inclusion in the planning document, the, the planning documents are what are included in your agenda package tonight. It's reviewed, the environmental impact is assessed, and we've reached the readiness to proceed stage. The public meeting, where the priority lists are developed this year, the, the first one of the fiscal year will be held on August eighth, where all the funding is available. The projects are ranked on a number of different factors, basically the benefit to the environment. And if the projects are listed, the funding is available, we would move on to the loan agreements, where we would come back a second time, as Joe mentioned, to get approval to actually secure the loans for these projects. So we look at the, the area, the, the state of Florida's invested a lot in Lakewood Parkway, the Lakewood Trail, the, the four projects we're here to talk to you about tonight, the first three are of the benefits of the Lakewood Parkway area over there in the Wolf Branch Innovation District. We'll go into a little more detail, but those four projects are the relocation utilities along US Four-Forty-One, extension of utilities on Wolf Branch Road and Round Lake Road, the connection to the City of Apaca with the reclaimed water interconnect, and then improvements at your wastewater treatment plant number one. So the first project here is the US Route Four-Forty-One utility relocations, relocating your existing utilities on Four-Forty-One between just north of Lincoln, near Renner's, up to Forty-Four in Donlin, or Four-Forty-One widens to three lanes already. FDOT's planning on coming in, widening that road in the future, kind of, not part of the Lakewood Parkway, but an ancillary project to that. Your utilities are currently in the right-of-way, they're impacted, FDOT owns, owns the right-of-way. You're going to be required to relocate the utilities in the future. So the design on that project is mostly complete, there are some easements that need to be obtained. The state revolving fund cannot be used for easement purchases, so the numbers we present here don't include any of the costs associated with buying easements, but they're just related to construction. So we anticipate the total cost of relocating utilities on Four-Forty-One to be around five-point-eight million dollars, and we would be ready to start construction towards the end of two thousand and eighteen, wrapping up in the fall of next year. The second project is extending utilities on Wolf Branch Road and Round Lake Road. Right now, the city's utilities, a couple years ago, they pretty much stopped around the Niles Road area, out on Wolf Branch. In advance of the Lakewood Parkway construction, we ran utilities out State Route Forty-Six. This project would create a loop across Wolf Branch, down Round Lake to Forty-Six, and then on the south side of State Route Forty-Six down to the Sullivan Ranch area, so that, a couple of advantages to this project, it provides utilities, water, wastewater, reclaimed water service to the Wolf Branch Innovation District. It also completes the loops of your water and reclaimed water system, it eliminates dead ends, eliminates stagnant water and issues like pressure if you have a line break or something, those areas that are currently served are still served. So this project, utility's gonna be constructed in easements, Lake County is currently looking at widening Round Lake Road. We thought about putting the utilities in the right-of-way, but if they widen the road, we'd be right back here, having to move things again. A number of those utilities have already been procured, but there are some others that are being worked on. Total cost of constructing these utilities, as well as a lift station to serve the entire Wolf Branch Innovation District, estimated around eight-point-four million dollars, and we'll be able to start construction in the spring of next year, probably take about a year to complete somewhere in the winter, two thousand and nineteen, early two thousand and twenty, twenty twenty. Third project is a reclaimed water interconnect at the City of Apaca. Right now, the City of Apaca has about a million gallons a day of reclaimed water in excess that they don't use. Both cities have already signed an agreement that they share reclaimed water with you. Mount Dora has a supplemental reclaimed water well at your wastewater treatment plant. The permanent limits on that well are decreasing over time, so you'll need to find another source of reclaimed water. This was a readily available alternative, connect to the City of Apaca's existing reclaimed main in Orange County, off of Kelly Park Road and Golden Gem Road, run west on Kelly Park Road north to the Orange County line. There would be a booster pump station that would be constructed off of Round Lake Road, likely on the east side, somewhere just north of the county line, that would be maintained by the city. So as mentioned earlier, the rough cost of this project, two-point-seven million dollars for both the pipeline and the booster pump station. Five-hundred-and-fifty thousand has already been obtained in grants from the St. John's River Water Management District and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, which leaves about two-point-one-five million that we would request under the, the loan program. And we've anticipated starting construction the end of this year, wrapping up in the spring. And we've anticipated starting construction the end of this year, wrapping up in the spring. This is a, there's a completion deadlines tied to the grant funding. And the final project is improvements at wastewater treatment plant number one. There was a study conducted, I believe, last year, the secondary clarifiers at the facility are showing a lot of corrosion, as well as the filter under drains. The clarifiers themselves are, uh, non-typical units, the existing tanks, uh, the, we replaced just the mechanisms, it's a proprietary manufacturer, and the, the tanks are of an age that, that don't have much useful life as remaining. So, what we recommended is just constructing new secondary clarifiers on the existing treatment plant site. The filters need some rehabilitation, replacement of the under drains, and you'll be able to achieve better performance than you've been getting so far, and keep the plant in compliance moving forward. What we grouped in is the second part of this project, right outside the entrance to the wastewater treatment plant off of, um, Eudora County Road, 19A, and Old Highway 441. Lake County is, uh, designed to conversion of that intersection to a roundabout. And again, a number of the city utilities in that area are in Lake County right-of-way, they have to be relocated for the construction of the roundabout. It's a small project, but because of its proximity to the wastewater treatment plant, we grouped it into this long request. This one, we estimate the cost of about $4.7 million, with, uh, construction being able to begin sometime in the middle of next year, complete in the middle of the following year, if we were to... And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Henry Thomas and PRMG to talk a little bit about the, the financial aspects.
Good evening. Uh, Henry Thomas, Public Resources Management Group, are, out of Maitland, Florida. As part of the documentation required to file your request for inclusion, uh, the DEP is asking for both historical financial operating results, as well as a set of projections that demonstrates the rates sufficiency to repay, uh, the, the loans. So, you might recall, uh, a couple of years ago, we did a, a rate study for the city, and we proposed adjustments that were adopted, uh, over a five-year period for both the water and the wastewater rates. At that time, those, that those rates were established, these projects were on the horizon and in the financial plan. So, when we set those rates and that pa, rate path that increases over the five-year period, it was assumed that these loans would be, uh, necessary, and that you would ha, uh, we would have the funding to repay them, built into that rate projection. So, that, that's what we've done. Uh, we did, uh, in doing this assignment, we didn't just rely on the rate study itself, we did look at your most recent, uh, actual financial operations, and we updated the projections for the current CIP and the current budgets that are in place today. So, we did, uh, revise things, uh, so that we made sure that there were no changes since the rate study that would affect these projections. Again, the requirement, uh, at, at the bottom line, you can see here, there's a, a percentage, uh, coverage calculation, and at, what SRF requires you to be able to do is pay off your senior debt, including any coverage ca, uh, requirements for that, and then that money, after payment of senior debt, is available for SRF, and you have to have greater than 115%. And as you can see, because of the other capital needs built into your plan that we're funding internally, we have plenty of coverage. So, it, with respect to this, uh, the rates are in place to repay the, the loans.
So, no increase, no anticipated need to increase in order to do this?
Uh, that's correct. Now, I have been asked to update the rate study, and we're gonna look forward another five years, and I know you recently approved that, uh, that, that agreement. So, we are gonna look at things and, and, uh, cash balances and things that were real critical last time, see where we are, but at least in terms of where we are today versus these loans, uh, we should be okay. Now, I know there's other projects out there, so we'll see how that looks as we look out over another five-year horizon.
So, I want to have a motion for approval of 2018-61. Any other comments, questions from Council? Mr. Olson?
Only, only that, this has been necessarily been on our planning...
This has been necessarily in our planning for several years, Innovation District, Lakewood, all of that. Um, we've, for years, been talking about those issues, uh, Thrill Hill issues, helping, those have always been on our horizon, and I see this as just the, uh, beginning of the end of that process. Uh, you can't, uh, there's a lot of money saved in using SRF loans, uh, and, uh, compared to other, uh, funding sources. It's also a part of our, uh, economic development strategy, which is number one, and as all these things fit together, it's, well, it's a lot of money, it's necessary money to do what we strategically planned, uh, for the past at least two years, or more, and, uh, so, uh, it's, I think it's part of the necessary process of completing that we've got in our str, in our strategic plan.
I have, I have one quick question. How does this affect any future plans to do anything more with Thrill Hill?
Well, Thrill Hill will be part of your SRF program to talk about this year, and actually, there's a project listed, um, and, uh, again, we're probably not going to look to SRF loans or possibly some other source.
So, I just, that's still active then?
Still active.
They're still active as a water retention area, so Apopka is not going to, this interconnect with Apopka is not going to serve our total needs?
No, Thrill Hill has other sources, has other... It's, um, sorry, I thought, thought it was on... Um, Joe, you wanna come up and talk about Thrill Hill? Um, it actually services other, as in other ways also, so we're looking at the 20 million gallon area versus the 40 million, working with the county to see when we need to activate that, so we had a meeting two weeks ago, three weeks ago, some, somewhere around that timeframe.
Just to give Council an update, uh, Apopka's gonna be, uh, almo, almost like a stopgap, a million gallons. Uh, as we grow, a million gallons will be used up quickly. Thrill Hill is probably on the five-year horizon, um, you know, five, 10-year horizon. We need to keep moving forward with, with both projects. Um, one of the things that's the immediate need is we currently supplement our water supply with a well at wastewater two. That allocation is, is ratcheted down every year. Thrill Hill's gonna take a while to do it, the Apopka will be immediate. So, it, it, we're, we're trying to do this in a logical sequence of equation to give our residents the maximum, uh, benefit of, of the beneficial water.
Okay, I just wanted...
Thank you.
Okay, any, um, there's a comment from the Council right now on all four of these projects. And, okay, anybody from the public wish to address this item? You can stay right where you're at, if you'd like.
Thank you. Joe Belasti, 2022 Sunset Road, Mount Dora. Hey, my first question appeals with all four, and I'm glad the finance guy's here, that only the financial disclosure there, they showed no growth in income from 2018 to 2022, just about maybe 20 grand a year, which is around the era, yet the operating costs go up 3.5% each year. That just looks strange to me, especially on the, uh, Apopka deal, to spend that much money and show you're actually not gonna make any money on it. And that's my basic question.
Do you need my tablet? Can you see that?
That's, that's, I, I, okay, thank you. So, again, a, as, as pointed out, keep in mind that these projects are to serve future growth, and these projections are over the next several years. So, we've been very modest about the amount of growth that we've calculated in over the next several years, but there's gonna be growth that supports these projects beyond the five-year period. And in addition to the rate revenue that you're gonna get from the additional customers, you're also gonna collect impact fees from those customers. So, again, uh, this is a conservative set of projections, uh, but it does, again, show the ability to pay. Uh, if the growth occurs faster than what we've programmed in here, then, uh, I think it'll just make the picture look better. So, yes, it is a conservative growth estimate for the next couple of years, but we have to get the facilities in place before that growth is gonna materialize, so...
Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, is any other additional comments from the Council? Okay, take a roll call vote on 2018-61?
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Um, Ms. Confront, will we have the title read for 2018-62?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 2018-62, resolution of City of Mount Dora, Florida, related to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, FDEP, state revolving fund, SRF, adoption of the SRF planning document for the Wolf Branch Road and Round Lake Utilities, authorizing the mayor to execute the SRF planning document in accordance with sound procurement practices and principles, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative action, providing for a savings provision, providing for scrubbers errors, complex severability, and effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. As we've discussed earlier and as it's been presented, but I will state that this one is for the Wolf Branch Road, um, that would extend from Britt Road to Round Lake Lot Road, um, and this one's estimated at 7.6 million.
Thank you. And have a motion for approval for 2018-62?
Mr. Tucker.
Okay, fine. Thank you, and we already had a little discussion. Ms. Council, can we have the roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, especially as a public...
We're gonna talk about each one of these as we go.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, and, um, the public is, um, anybody from the public wish to address this item?
Obviously, I do.
Thank you. I apologize for that, I'm sorry.
I'm Scott Johnston, I live at 30230 Pariteras, and I'm, uh, our treasurer for our HOA in Round Lake, in Sullivan Ranch. And I've got questions, because obviously, I del, I develop a lot of property all over the State of Florida, and there's processes and policies that we all have to go through in order to work through entitlements, through easements, through acquisitions, through tracks, and absolutely, to date, none of this has been done properly with us. So, I would think before we start to go leap off the bridge that we're moving forward, we probably oughta come back to Sullivan Ranch and have a, a serious dialogue about the easements and about what we're gonna do in our community. Because right now, what we've been presenting is a letter that started as a demand letter, in essence, that said that you were going to eminent domain and property that you literally do not have any jurisdiction. So, starting down that road is not a good way to go. And then every plan we've seen to date has the lift stations moving all over the place. We've been handed plans that are landscape plans, told that they're Mount Dora standards, and God bless you for that, but at the same time, we're in Lake County, we have our own community. So, again, I think before we move forward, there needs to be a serious discussion about this, because to date, it has not been handled the right way. And I'm actually the spokesperson for this particular issue, so I've already reached out to Ed once, told him we need to talk. Somebody went back to our HOA management, not to me, told him that you're already moving forward and it's too late, so that's not gonna cut it, especially in our community.
Who is Ed?
Ed Barfield.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to speak on this one, please?
Sure. Robert, we've been strong, hi, uh, as you are aware, the city has contracted, um, with Ed Barfield to do the utility easement acquisition, um, not just for this project, but for several projects throughout the city. Um, I have seen the letters that Ed has presented, as you know, Ed's highly qualified, he did this for DOT for many, many years. Uh, he is required, statutorily, to reference the fact that the city has the ability to utilize eminent domain for the acquisition of easements and right-of-way. In no way did his letter state that that was the city's intention, uh, so that may be a slight misunderstanding. With regards to the front of Sullivan Ranch Club, as the community is platted today, there is an easement outside of the Round Lake Road right-of-way that is reserved for utilities, that exists today, and the city has every right to use that utility easement for your lines. Inside of that utility easement, as it exists today, are all of those existing oak trees that line the front of the project, which we do not want to have to take down, we have no intention of taking down. Ed reached out to the HOA, utilizing the approved process for doing such, and requested an easement outside of that right-of-way, or, I'm sorry, outside of the existing easement that's already there. So, in, in essence, what he asked for from the HOA was an additional easement outside of the, uh, existing easement, so that those trees could be maintained as they are today, and your lines could be put in without impacting all of those beautiful oak trees along the right-of-way. So, that is where we are moving on the lines today. We have every right today to take out every one of those oak trees as they exist and put our lines in an easement that is already exist, already exists and is already dedicated to the public for that use. We don't wanna do that. So, that's where Ed has been talking with the HOA. The second matter is for the booster pump station. We started conversation, uh, as we were instructed to do with the, uh, HOA. Not sure, uh, we, we tried to follow the processes, evidently, there are some people that think they are involved or not involved, we're not sure. We, we need a 50 by 50, um, piece of property in which to put our booster pump station. As Ed has tried to work with the HOA and the representatives that we've been asked to work with, uh, we've come up against some resistance. As such, Joe has instructed Ed to instead look on the east side of Round Lake Road. He has already made contact with that property owner, and they even expressed an interest to allow us to, uh, purchase an easement or, uh, a fee simple title to this property in which we put our booster pump station. So, as I understand it from Ed, and he's handling this process, he's still trying to work with the HOA representatives to obtain an extra easement, so we don't take down all of those oak trees. Whether or not that process moves smoothly will not stop the project. We can put the lines in easements that the city already has rights to utilize, so, uh, I don't know that it should affect what we're trying to do here today. Ed will continue to work in good faith on the city's behalf to obtain the additional easements and, uh, real property for the booster pump station, and if it doesn't work out with the HOA, um, then we will simply utilize what's already there for us.
Thank you.
Which would mean removing...
Which would... Hold on, hold on, hold on, come back, hold on, come back.
Uh, may I ask one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Legal, um, Jennifer, have you been involved with any of the, um, okay, so Joe's shaking his head, no, but, um...
No, I haven't done this, I haven't been involved in easements yet, to my knowledge, there, there are some parcels along 441 that I've been involved with utilities, those are the only so far, and, um, not to my knowledge, just one, I just wanted to bring it out.
Okay. Anybody else in the public wish to address this one item, which is the Round Lake, Wolf Branch, Round Lake Road Utilities?
I know Ed's got like a page, you know, a packet of partials he's represented on.
Okay, seeing none, and, um, the Council again. Um, Ms. Tillot, did you have a question that you...
So, I just wanted to clear in my mind, the existing right-of-way that the city has...
The city doesn't have that. There's an east end outside of the Lake County right-of-way.
Okay, the lake, okay, the, has, has the oak trees on it?
Yes.
Okay. And now, and we have the right to use that piece of land, dig it up if we have to, get rid of the trees if we have to, but we're trying not to do that. I'm trying to get what's really simple in my mind. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Council, we have a roll call of this, and Ms. Massey, Henry?
No.
Or, uh, Doc? Mr. Tucker?
I'm curious about the letter that's been mentioned by two parties.
Sure, it's, it's the standard letter that we sent out, um, when we're, um, seeking to do a voluntary acquisition. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. I thought you... Um, is it in the packet, maybe?
I don't know that it's in the packet. Um, it's, it's standard letter that you actually seen the last several times we've had easements and right-of-ways, but I can send that to Council.
Yeah, it's a standard letter, it just says basically that this is a voluntary acquisition we're trying to do, we're not seeking into eminent domain, um, even though that is available to the city, that we're, that's not the route that we were going, 'cause he tries to negotiate voluntary acquisitions first, 'cause it's a beneficial, you know, thing to the city.
I believe the last, the, we showed it, uh, it was part of the package last meeting for Britt Road, and Mr. Brochak...
Brochak, thank you.
It was part of that package. So, we use the same one for everything, so we don't deviate from that.
That is the letter, though.
That is the letter, it should be. I, again, it wasn't part of this package, so we...
Again, I'm concerned about the fact that's not part of the package.
Well, we're, we're, because we're not purchasing the parcel, so...
It wasn't brought forward for this one, this issue.
Black line, I can't find something, I overheard at a, um, meeting a long time ago, and...
Black, that clarifies something I overheard at a, um, meeting a long time ago, and quite a few months back, about, um, the city's coming in to, um, eminent domain, take everything away from everybody, and, uh, so that clarifies what, that, uh-
Yes, the county.
That they were talking about, yes, okay. All right, um, Mr. Crayle?
Well, um, I, I think we wanna be as good a neighbor as we possibly can, we don't wanna take down, um, oak trees unless it's absolutely necessary, and I just hope that our representatives, I, I trust that they will proceed in good faith to, uh, work with all the parties concerned to, to make a, a project that's in the best interest of, of everybody.
Ms. Jones, can we have a roll call vote on this item?
Ms. Crayle?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Kaufman, could we have the title read for resolution number twenty eighteen dash sixty-three?
Resolution number twenty eighteen dash sixty-three, a resolution of City of Mount Dora, Florida, related to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, FDEP, State Revolving Fund, SRF, adoption of the SRF, planning document for implementation of the US four forty-one utility relocation proj- project improvements, authorizing the mayor to execute the SRF planning document in accordance with sound procurement practices and principles, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, scrubbers, errors, conflicts, severability, and effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Again, um, I think it's already been mentioned, so, um, I have this one as the, as we discussed earlier, US four forty-one utilities for about five point eight million.
I have a motion for approval of twenty eighteen dash sixty-three.
I saw both.
Second, thank you, any comments, questions from the council, uh, public, any public comments on twenty eighteen dash sixty-three, the US four forty-one utility project? Seeing none, Ms. Jones, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Ms. Jerome?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Kaufman, could we have the title read for resolution number twenty eighteen dash sixty-four?
Yes, sir, resolution number twenty eighteen dash sixty-four, a resolution of City of Mount Dora, Florida, related to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, FDEP, State Revolving Fund, SRF, adoption of the SRF planning document for the wastewater treatment plant number one improvement, authorizing the mayor to execute the SRF planning document in accordance with sound procurement practices and principles, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for savings provision, scrubbers, errors, conflicts, severability, effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, council members, again, this is, uh, wastewater treatment plant number one for approximately four point seven million dollars.
Thank you, Kevin, motion for approval?
Motion for approval. Second.
And the, any comments from the council? None. Anybody from the public wish to address twenty eighteen dash sixty-four? Seeing none, Ms. Jones, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Thank you very much, so that concludes all the state revolving fund, fund, uh, plans, and so, Ms. Kaufman, could we have resolution number twenty eighteen dash eighty-four, the First Amendment to the City of Mount Dora and Orange County Interlocal Agreement, JPA. Thank you guys for your-
Thank you.
Yes, sir, resolution number twenty eighteen dash eighty-four, a resolution of City of Mount Dora, Florida, approving amendment to existing joint planning area interlocal agreement between Orange County and Mount Dora, authorizing the mayor to execute that interlocal agreement, providing for implementing action, savings, conflicts, scrubbers, errors, severability, and effective date.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Hayes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, council members, so Vince Sandersfeld is here to give you a quick summary in reference to the, uh, request here, in reference to, uh, Orange County Interlocal Agreement, our GJPA, and the property there.
Good evening, Vince Sandersfeld, Planning Department, uh, thank you, Ms. Hayes. This was last seen in January of this year, it is a, uh, future land use amendment in Orange County, uh, proposed, uh, to change, you may recall, residential density change, and then they had a commercial tract up front. It's now kinda gone through the Orange County Board of Commissioners to the town plan process, and the last step is to amend our interlocal agreement, so the request in front of you is to take the Orange County, City of Mount Dora, joint planning agreement, and incorporate the change of the front commercial that you approved in January. The density was rejected, and still, say, the same, but the two hundred and eighty units are specified, uh, there's no change to that, this only addresses the move forward with commercial through the change of the office. So this is really the last step in the process, uh, to ratify the, the land use change into our concept map, so we're on the same page with Orange County and Mount Dora. Uh, I will note, remember back in January, we're talking about seven and a half acres, uh, but the commercial is restricted, there's seventy-five thousand square feet of building, um, they kinda wanna look at the area that was that, um, cow pond out front, uh, so maybe they said, well, ten acres, we could have a little flexibility, so this opens space and so forth, so we adjusted that, that made sense to us to, uh, look at the size of the property, but the building intensity in the agreement is the same. We also looked at the land use table in the agreement and did some modifications of acres, they're, they're now refined a little better, so we made the agreement better. So with that quick lead-in, uh, can answer any questions, this is the First Amendment to the City of Mount Dora and Orange County Interlocal Agreement, JPA.
Having motion for approval, twenty eighteen dash eighty-four?
Second.
Thank you, any comments, questions, Mr. Crayle?
Um, yeah, maybe I'm jumping the gun here, but do we know whether the residential units are planned to be apartments or condos, or, do we know that?
Yeah, I do not know that, that's another question for Orange County, um, the original proposal was for senior housing, uh, they meant the pub, it would be through Orange County, if they pursue with the unit count, the unit count stayed the same, there's no changes, but type of housing, uh, that's with Orange County and their process, that they're master planning.
So we, we have no say-so on that?
We wouldn't have any, uh, our joint planning agreement looks at utilities, and, um, commercial areas, landscaping, and signage, so residential, uncommercial, so the residential, we just look at utility.
Thanks.
And density.
And density.
And density.
Mr. Roth-
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Did you say the seven point five commercial area is, is amended up to ten?
Up to ten, yes, but the size of the building cap is the same.
All right, that's fine, thank you.
Any else from the council? Anybody from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, Ms. Jones, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Ms. Kaufman, could we have the title read for resolution number twenty eighteen dash eighty-nine, the Public Safety Radio Purchase Interlocal Agreement?
Yes, sir, resolution number twenty eighteen dash eighty-nine, a resolution of City of Mount Dora, approving an amended and restated interlocal agreement between Lake County, Lake of Martyrs, the Methodist Services, and the municipalities of Lake County and Lake County Sheriff, for the replacement of the existing countywide emergency network radios, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for authority to the city manager for implementing administrative actions, providing for authority to mayor execute, providing for a savings provision, scrubbers, errors, conflicts, severability, effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Thank you, ca- uh, Mayor, council members, um, this particular item, um, as it's written, is really a request from Lake County and actually works very well for the City of Mount Dora and all the other cities, um, we all become really one partner, um, in, um, being able to provide a very similar system within the communication, um, services, um, I think, Miss, uh, our police chief and our public safety director, Donna Grady, could actually probably provide you a little more information, um, I will say that we are, um, pushing these dollars into next year's budget, it's about ninety, just under ninety-four thousand at this point in time, um, the memo states it's two hundred and eleven radios, actually we have in the one-eighties numbers, one-eighty-one, one-eighty-five, somewhere around that, um, but this is up to the two-eleven, uh, we'll make the commitment to the county that we'll pay our portion of the, um, radio cost, which is again around ninety-three thousand, um, this does not include the maintenance costs or the service software costs, um, that each department will have in its own budget, um, and you'll see these items in next year's budget, so you will see the public safety side, meaning police and, uh, fire will be part of your discretionary sales tax fund, you'll see the other pieces of that part in the different funds, so you'll see public works and general fund, where you'll see electrical piece in their fund and so forth, that will be part of your capital ally budget that you'll see, um, and presented to you, so, um-
Where's Donna, she didn't see that, right?
Chief, would you like to come up and just, uh, a quick summary of anything that I may have missed on that?
Sure.
Um, the county has asked that we submit this back to them as quickly as possible.
Thank you, um, the city manager covered everything, uh, this is our current radios, whether they're with utilities, leisure services, public works, public safety, have ended their useful life, we're at the last probably eighteen months, so I think over the next year, um, the, the new radios will be coming in, and we do go through, uh, Lake County's Communications Department to, to get all this.
And that, hey, uh, you have a motion, uh, have a motion for approval?
I moved here, bro.
I'll second the motion on eighty-nine. Okay, and, you, Miss, uh, Miss Tillot, all right.
Okay, I'm not thinking this much. So I'm assuming that, that our radios and Lake County are all-
Everything's interoperable.
Interoperable and shared software and, you know, the whole nine yards.
Yes, so we are going with Motorola and, and actually, for public safety side, it will probably be central Florida-wide, which is a good thing.
Yes, that is a very good thing, and, you know, being in telecommunications back on nine eleven, when, when it was very apparent that there was one network that was interoperable throughout that whole time when everybody else was crashing, um, i- it's very important that, you know, everybody's meshes and, and that everything is interoperable, very, 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 very important, so.
One other feature I wanted to bring out, uh, this is the existing radios as well as the new radios, um, they have the ability to, um, set aside emergency channels during hurricanes, we didn't have to do that with this last hurricane or month, but they can do that, uh, programmatically, and so we could have like a hurricane emergency channel and things like that, so, um, I believe all the police, all the fire in Lake County's on the same radio system, and most of the cities, well, in Lake County.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, from, uh, going back into my past life, when I got transferred here from the north and covered six counties, uh, on my vehicle, I had radio communications set up for Lake County, Orange County, Seminole County, Brevard County, I looked like a Russian trawler. And, but, I had to look like that because I got called out in the middle of the night, and I needed backup, I was the only inspector for X amount of miles, so I had to have access to the county sheriff's office.
It's come a long way since then.
Yeah, it has.
A long way, baby.
I, uh, cannot support this enough, I mean, just from a safety standpoint alone, it's, it's very-
Okay, Mr. Rothson?
Thank you, Mayor, um, I had the same questions, uh, when I was visiting with Ms. Hayes, uh, about this that you had, um, I also vividly remember the news items of nine eleven about one department not communicating with the other, it was sinful, the way it was set up, so I would never support this if it wasn't mutually compatible with least central Florida, as you've said it is, and certainly in Lake County, and that's good. The other question I had was, is two hundred and eleven enough? And I'm sure that it is, because we're below that now anyway, and we can work up to that maximum, those are my two criteria, and they've been both satisfied.
Any other comments from the council? And anybody from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, Ms. Jones, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Crayle?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman, could we have a resolution number twenty eighteen dash ninety-one, read by title, please?
Yes, sir, resolution number twenty eighteen dash ninety-one, a resolution of City of Mount Dora, approving a scope of services with final estimates included by Pegasus Engineering for repairs to be completed by geo-stabilization international LLC for public works project, projects necessary to repair the full disact at Mount Valia Endee and Badwood Mountain Reserve, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for authority to town manager for implementing administrative actions, providing for authority to mayor execute, finding for a savings provision, uh, provision.
Hayes?
Like congested, sick, not like a, I'm getting more confused than if you can hear me reading, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it just happened to my-
Mayor, council members, uh, this particular item, we've, we've been discussing obviously several weeks now, and, um, at the last meeting, we talked about bringing this back to you with the total, we reached out to Pegasus, um, they gave us the final scope of services, um, we included in that final scope of services, everything that has really transpired from the inception of this issue that we're dealing with, um, through the purchase of the land that we purchased recently, it's about one point seven million dollars, um, as part of that, uh, we have, uh, included, um, also the information of the, really the FEMA state and the FEMA federal, as well as the city requirements, so from the federal government, we anticipate one point five million from the state, about the same amount that we would pay, which would be around the two hundred- This package is an advance from, um, our utilities, electric, um, for the cash in case of the- Officially move those funds to recognize it as an official loan, to set aside an amortization schedule until the funds are received, so that it's properly recorded with the electric company as well, electrical piece of the company, as well as within the- Important that it is there so that when our auditors come in, they can see that we have recognized everything up to date, we will actually make the budget amendment that's been presented here to, as part of this, uh, attachments, um, uh, within the next probably fifteen days, so that the funds are reflected properly, um, this also makes the payment process to GSI very quick, um, because- This is really just the cleaning house, so to speak, of the process and the fact that Pegasus did a wonderful job- Everything that we have done out there on that project, now, this being said, I do believe we'll have some, um, stormwater pond issues later, that we'll have to deal with down on, uh, Adore, uh- To this later, but it's not part of the, the work to maintain and, uh, prevent the erosion, this'll be another piece, we actually hope to reach out to St. John's and maybe even Lake, um, Lake County Water Authority and to maybe receive a little relief from them, also- Send out a weekly update from our, our newest cast member over here, Mr. Mark Rodowski, um, he, he walks out with his hard hat and, and all of his, uh, uh, gear, and he provides the citizens, especially those in the area of Godwood Mountain and Reserve area, an update of where we're at, so, um, I believe that's pretty much it on this particular item, but we would answer any questions you might have to have.
Have a motion for approval, resolution number twenty eighteen dash ninety-one?
Second.
Second. Okay, any comments? Mr. Crayle?
Well, I- Their patience and their documentation- To get out of this with two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of cost, um, and have nearly, um, one point nine million paid by the state and FEMA, um, the communications- Tonight, this is the way it's supposed to be done, it was a horrible, um, tragedy, but I, I just can't say enough about how our staff has, has handled this, and I want to thank everybody who's been- been involved.
Any other comments from the council? Anybody from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none. Ms. Council, we have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Tillet?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Crail?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufrock, will we have the title read for Resolution Number Twenty Eighteen Dash Seventy-Six?
Resolution Number Twenty Eighteen Dash Seventy-Six, a resolution of City of Meldora, Florida, authorizing a piggyback contract for bio solids, sludge services with Shelley's Septic Company, DVA, the Shelley's Environmental Systems, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for conflict saving, severability, conflict again, effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Trying to get to the page.
Sure, you're right.
I know. Twenty-three oh nine.
Just think that that was in a book format.
Yeah, mine would disturb.
On the left side, I have the numbers.
I have page numbers. I can't look them up.
I don't have new system, but when you get the hard copy, it doesn't have numbers.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Again, so this is a piggyback agreement with the, via the City of Oviedo, with Shelley's Septic Tank and Joe Griszkowski, Griszkowski, yes. Usually I can say it with no problem, all of a sudden I'm not. The, you know, we've had a very fortunate situation in the past years. We had a handshake with Shelley's and a good agreement, but we are formalizing it. We actually, that's it. We went back to find all the paperwork and we could not find anything more than that. So, this is the formalization of that process. And maybe years ago, that worked well, but we should have more than that. So, we reached out to the City of Oviedo only because Joe did his homework. They actually had the best agreement. We actually looked to go for an RFP and so forth, but we actually could not get as good a rate as what the City of Oviedo was, Oviedo was able to negotiate. So, Joe, can you give them a quick summary of what we're trying to do?
Yes. As part of the wastewater treatment process, we have solids that cannot be treated down any longer. So, each plant has its own set of solids. These solids are then shipped off to a third party, which makes a fertilizer product out of them. And Shelley's is basically the only game in town in central Florida. We reached out to several of the municipalities and we talked about doing our own bit. We are fairly small potatoes in the sludge business. So, having a larger contract, City of Oviedo hauls a lot more sludge than we do. Just about everybody in central Florida is piggybacking off of this contract. So, we're moving to that. It is not as good a deal as what we had before, but we, that deal is over. So, we're basically going to have to pay for trucking. We're not paying for trucking on the, from the previous contract. But as we potentially improve the wastewater one site, there's a potential to put a screw press in there in the future, which would reduce the water weight and probably reduce our shipping by half. Or, you know, so you talk about some big savings down the road. So, although it's going up temporarily, I think it can go down in the future with a screw press, et cetera. And we'll keep looking at those costs as we go through, and we'll make that part of the process of the wastewater one evaluation as we go about.
Motion for approval?
Second.
I think Shelley's would be the last company I would want to do a handshake with. Since we're a small sludge city. You say we're a small sludge city, is that, say that three times. Okay, here goes our quirky little town, our nice old thing that we had. Now we're going to small sludge city.
We have reporters sitting here listening to this.
Okay. Any comments from the, any comments from the city council on this item? Right, Ms. Roth?
Only that, this is not meant to be tongue in cheek, but on page twenty-three sixteen, the fact that this vendor will be agreeing to our terms and conditions as set out and underlined in that is important, and that satisfies me.
Any other comments? Anybody from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none. Ms. Council, we have a roll call vote, please.
Tillet?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes. Can we take a short recess for a little bit, please?